Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 regular meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda provided at either end of the dais. Manager Kelly, would you please call the roll?
I'm so sorry. I have a new laptop. It's not working.
Absolutely, I'm happy to speak. There's a small echo, but that's coming out of someone's computer, so. All right. Would you please call the roll?
Here.
Noting that Vice Chair Abrams is absent. Sarah Hammerschmidt.
Here.
Juan Wu Li. Lisa Dish.
Here.
Sarah Mills noted absent this evening. Julie Weatherby.
Here.
Daniel Adams.
Here.
And Richard Norton.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Weatherby, seconded by Councilmember Dish. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries, and we'll note that Commissioner Li has arrived. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 3rd, 2025 meeting? Moved by Commissioner Weatherby, seconded by Commissioner Hammerschmidt. All those, excuse me, is there any discussion of the minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion carries. Next up are the reports to the Planning Commission and written communications. We'll start with Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. All right, so last night, some interesting things happened. City Council approved, or yes, directed the city administrator to further negotiate plans for development of the Kleinslot and 415 West Washington, which will be coming to this body. So there's nothing concrete, but I believe that at least the Kleinslot would come to this body, and yes, there would be a site plan for the PUD on 415 West Washington, which will come. Yes?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Good. Okay, then, we did a first reading on the rezoning and site plan for 2525 Ann Arbor Celine Road, which is known as the Crescent. And though this passed on the first reading, I know, it's not your fault, council members were, several council members were concerned about the traffic plans for, I mean, what I should say rather, is the Hawklight installation plans. I think we discussed at this table, and we noted that the developer had indicated a willingness to pay for a traffic light if that were preferred to Hawklights, where this site may be especially challenged, at least in one part, because there's a hill, there's four lanes, people don't always stop for those. This is, I don't think necessarily for us, but I wanted you to know that those concerns had been raised, and this would be an instance where, since there is a month before it comes up for second reading, I believe there is a strong desire for staff to pursue with the developer and coordinating with transportation, whether in the long term or sooner, there can be enhanced pedestrian protection for that new thing. So I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say that, but I didn't really know how to otherwise report it in a way that isn't as if I'm sending staff on assignments of my own preference, which is not my job. So the Arguson-Packard rezoning and area plan waiver request went through. People were not as impressed with the fact that we no longer use parking as a buffer, as I hoped they would be. I thought they would be really excited and jubilant about that, but they really weren't. And then, we did send something related to the marijuana thing that's on our agenda tonight, and Mr. Leonard will explain if there's any pertinence to what council passed. And I am leaving out some things I believe that are on Mick's Kelly's list, because I couldn't get teams open in time.
I have, my list, it might have some redundancy to yours, but I have the development agreement for 1208 South Division was approved, amendment to a purchase agreement for 1146 South Maple, the revised consent judgment for the Weber property, 2857 Packard, first reading of the Crescent, as you mentioned, and rezoning with some questions, and first reading of 1007 Woodlawn rezoning with no questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Dish. Will we, do we have a manager's report?
I do have a brief manager's report this evening, which is that for the third year in a row, the planning team will be at the Green Fair. On Friday, September 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., our table will focus on how the draft comprehensive plan promotes sustainability. And so you will see staff out at the Green Fair. Please come say hi. Don't be shy to drop by our table. And as always, I know we invite planning commissioners to attend with us.
Thank you. Do other commissioners or committee liaisons have anything else to report? Seeing none, written communications are in today's packet, which are available in Legisstar. So we come now to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues not listed as a public hearing or dedicated public comment period on today's agenda. We will first hear from those of you who are present in the chamber, then we will hear from remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone, or use the raised hand feature if using Zoom. For phone access, call 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name for Zoom users. You'll hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present in the chamber who would like to speak? Yeah, come right up.
Thank you, Reverend, and members of the commission and city staff. My name is James Demore, and I live in the Third Ward of the City of Ann Arbor. I was going to speak with portfolio on one particular subject matter related to the comprehensive plan. I'll touch on that and that, but I think I'll represent myself solely as an individual. The primary thing, I'm still concerned about some things that are really not there, and I've discussed this with Mr. Leonard, and I have not heard back from him. But specifically, I'm talking about the, there's no reference or mention of the Gelman Plume, 1.4 Daxan Gelman Plume in the plan. And I really think that's important. I don't know what it boils down to in terms of the final recommendations that your body or the city council will take regarding the plan, but it is really important to have that as a historical factor. And considering development in terms of shaping it, I certainly think it should be in the plan. I'll touch on some of the other things that I've noted, and I'm sure it's been discussed, but it seems to me I'm seeing a pattern. I'm glad that the comprehensive plan does reference the Green Belt Milletage that was passed in 2003, and will be up again, barring any early review, in 2033. It's a landmark milletage, and I'm glad that the city makes reference to it. But it mentions acquisitions of land outside the city. What it was, and I was involved in terms of supporting when it was passed, also includes one-third of the millage being appropriated for land preservation with the city. I think it's important, we need to have that language in the plan as well. Also, I'm particularly troubled that the natural features plan is not moving forward in the new plan in terms of the supporting documents drawn out. It really needs to happen. And while, whatever you feel about these environmental issues, whether you have a more restrained view of development, or you're frankly of "grow, baby, grow," you should be concerned about the natural systems of our city. And yes, having a non-motorized structure is important, and when I was on Planning Commission, it was a fight to get that taken care of, so I'm glad to see that in the plan, and reference, and we've come a long way. And certainly, solar as well. We need to also, sustainability happens protecting the natural environment as well. So as we move forward, as we grow, or however we choose to grow, we really need to take a firm look at protecting our natural features. And with that, I'd be seat of you, and I wish you all good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Jiskiewicz, 1430 Las Vegas Drive, and I'd just like to use this as an opportunity to plug Neighborhood Week. This is a week-long series of activities and events focused on building Ann Arbor's future with big ideas around land use and transportation. Please join us at our events this week. We have some flyers over there, or just talk to any of us, or check out moreneighborsa2.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber? Seeing none. Manager Kelly, do we have remote participants?
We have no remote participants.
Fantastic. I will close the public hearing. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Seven, Communication from Commissioners. Are there any? I would like to make one small one. This week, on Thursday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 9:00, I will be in attendance at Home for Good, which is an event for Avalon Housing, where I will be receiving their Community Advocate Award. And so, thank you. And I actually have some tickets that are still in my possession, so if you would like to join me at my table, I would love to have you join me. Any other communications from Commissioners? Commissioner Weatherby.
Congratulations on that award. And also, thank you to everyone who's participating in Neighborhood Week. I think it's a, it's good for people to be involved in their city and the future of it. So however you feel about changes that are happening, it's good to be involved.
Anyone else? That'll take us to Agenda Item Number Eight, Public Hearing Scheduled for the Next Business Meeting. Manager Kelly, do we have any public hearings scheduled?
There are no public hearings scheduled for the Tuesday, October 7th, 2025 meeting. That meeting will start at 5:30 p.m., and the commission will discuss the third draft of the comprehensive land use plan. There will be two opportunities for public comment at the beginning and end of that meeting.
Thank you very much. Onto Agenda Item Number Nine, Unfinished Business. There is none. That takes us to Agenda Number Ten, Regular Business, and we will start with a petition that we have here before us for 2502 Packard Street, also known as The George, SP 24-0019, Site Plan for Planning Commission Approval. Before us is a proposed site plan to construct a four-story, 46-unit apartment building with ground floor retail space at The George, an existing four-story, 249-unit apartment building. Staff recommendation is approval. We'll start with the petitioner presentation, and then we'll hear from Planner DeLeo. We'll have a public hearing, and then the commission will consider this proposal and have our discussion and ultimate vote. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Ken Gold. I'm a representative of Inspired by Somerset Development, the owner of The George. I was here three years ago, and I think a lot of people remember me. I gave a whole spiel about how retail didn't work in the space as it was designed in that moment, because it didn't. We had 20,000 square feet of vacant retail, recessed off the road, below grade. You couldn't really see it. No one wanted to rent the space. We had tours, we had lots of interests, we had lots of people asking to see it, no one wanted to see it after a while, and then it just sat vacant. We, you guys gave us, gave us the approval, we built it out, it's now leased, it's thriving under the residential portion. When the City of Ann Arbor changed their parking requirements to reduce the parking burden by, of developments, we had 457 parking spaces on a 250-unit building. It was largely unused. And that same issue at the front, where whenever I get dropped off on an Uber there and has no idea where to go, and when people come in looking for space and they have no idea where to go, that represented an issue and an opportunity. I'm proud to say that we are proposing a plan here that provides retail in this space. There's about 1,600 square foot of retail on the ground floor, right on Packard, double-height space, so that it's actually, so there's signage that's actually visible from the road on Packard. You can walk down from Packard into the space, and the drive aisle has actually been removed around the current courtyard, and that will become green space for walkability, access, and just better use for the community. The parking has actually been reduced to where I have 411 parking spaces now. I will be parking at about 1.2 per unit, which is exactly what I'm parking today, leased, so parking really should not be that much of an issue. I want to thank everyone for listening to this, because I know it was very difficult when I, when we removed the retail before, but we genuinely, it could not work, and we truly believe that this will work. And so I want to introduce Scott Bowers, who can give a little bit more detail on the elevations and the plans here.
Good evening. Scott Bowers, 2400 South Yarn Park Way. Bowers and Associates Architects. If we could, go to the next slide. This, this slide shows you in the U shape where our new proposed building sits. Currently, it's angled parking all the way around, and if, I think it's in the last slide, right? I can show you what we've done to... Maybe it didn't make it. It would be then back to the landscape. There was a colored landscape, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's a four-story building. Primary material is hardy plank on the upper floors. First floor has a band of masonry, and masonry on the retail portion, which is out front. You can drive through all three wings. If you look at the site plan, you can see that there's three projections out in the U shape, and you can drive under the building on all three buildings. We've got a great mixture of two bedrooms, one bedrooms, and one-bedroom It's 50 feet tall. There we go. So you can see the curvature of the road going underneath the buildings, and then how we've designed the courtyard now. The courtyard's 40-plus feet wide on each side. We do not attach ourselves to the existing building, but it is walkable to the existing building. At the bottom of the U is the main entrance. I don't know if you can... So we have some outdoor areas, some seating areas, a winding path, and then, as you can see, the little rectangles on our building, those are actually entranceways into the apartments. So we have good connectivity to our plaza space, which where we didn't have it before is more of a concrete parking area rather than a usable landscape area. Our color palette is the same as the existing building. We do have a sign feature in front of the building against Packard Road. And some undulation in the building itself. We're excited about this building, because it does fulfill a need for the development, and uses the underutilized space that we have on the current site. You can see the renders, which we have, we have some night views, and then you can see where you go under the building, and then the retail spot, which is up on Packard. The upper right is the front of the building on Packard, and you can see the retail space down below, and its apartments all above. Next slide. That's fine. You can see the undulation in the building, and the height is 150 feet. Again, you can see the doors into the apartments off the plaza. Go to the next slide, please. The front of the building, where we have masonry on the first floor, giving a little different look. And then, again, the hardy plank siding up above. And again, these colors match the existing building. Next slide, please. Again, the other side with the opening, and then you can see the glass into the retail Our typical floor plans, we have two bedrooms on the ends, one bedrooms in the majority of the building, and a few standard studios. We do have loss on the first floor. That was what that first slide was. That one we don't need to talk about. But again, this one, you can see where the parking If you go to one more floor plan, and then pretty much wrap that up. Good. So hopefully you've seen enough.
So my engineer is also on Zoom. If there's any questions, I know we worked really hard with Lexis and the whole team to get, get all the fire safety and stormwater and all that stuff taken care of. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. If not, just, you know, put it to a vote, or whatever you guys want to do.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll now go to the staff presentation, and we'll call you back up when it's our turn if we have questions for you. Thank you so much. Planner DeLeo.
As mentioned, this is the 2502 Packard Street Site Plan for Planning Commission Approval. It is known as The George. Site is located on the west side of Packard, between Pine Valley Boulevard and King George Boulevard, in the south area of the city. It's a six-and-a-half acre site, Zone C1B, and it was, it's developed with The George. site, Zone C1B, and it's developed with the George, which is about 250-unit apartment building, 365 square feet or so. And it contains over 400 parking spaces. It does have a good number, 56 Class A bicycle parking spaces already. Some of those parking spaces are in a garage underneath the building on its east, no, its west side. Tonight, the proposed site plan adds a four-story building to the front, in between the existing buildings' north and south wings. It'll take away about 42 parking spaces in that particular area. A few more parking spaces will be removed for other site improvements, such as additional trash and recycling facilities. The new building contains 46 apartments and a small retail space, as mentioned. Other site improvements that go along with this are just repairs and normal maintenance to the stormwater management system, and a little bit of regrading for improved drainage on the west side of the site. Mentioned the additional trash and recycling facilities. There'll be a new fire hydrant up on Packard, and those are proposed to support the new building. A parks contribution has been offered of a little more than, almost $34,000 for the additional 46 households to be added to the city. And all told, the site will have around 415,000 square feet of total floor area in the two buildings, the same 400 and some parking spaces in garages, carports, and service lots. The city's development review team reviewed the whole package for compliance with all of our various codes and standards and found it to comply. In the staff report, there is a site plan review summary, which contains most of the dimension, most of the various development standards for a summary of our cross-department review. Planning staff is recommend, oh, I should also mention that there is a little bit of approval history in the staff report. The project was first developed as the Packard Square Site Plan for City Council Approval back in 2001. And then it had a slew of amendments, generally tweaks, as the designs evolved and construction plans were coming along, and then even, I think, a little bit post-approval to reflect some as-built or some needed changes. And then it did have a major site plan change in, that Mr. Gold mentioned, to convert the approved retail space into additional apartments. If I'm repeating myself, I apologize, but staff does recommend approval of the version five site plan dated August 15th. That is in the motion, and we recommend City Council enter into a development agreement for that parkland contribution. Happy to answer any questions? Just let me know.
Great. Thank you, Planner DeLeo. We'll now set aside some time for a public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on the proposed 2502 Packard Street Site Plan. We'll first hear from those that are present in the chambers, then remote participants. To speak remotely, press *9 if on phone, or use the raise hand feature if using Zoom. For phone access, dial 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone, or by name if using Zoom. You'll hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present who would like to speak?
For the sake of your future sleep schedules, I hope all meetings are this boring. Hello, Planning Commission. I'm Mark Skirbo, 2017 Fair Street. Today is my birthday, and I couldn't think of a better way to spend my 30th birthday than surrounded by neighbors who want to make Ann Arbor a more welcoming city. I'm excited to see the George continue to evolve their property and add more housing in place of underutilized service parking lots. The greater building frontage will make Packard a more welcoming experience for pedestrians, which is an experience already improved by Packard Row. The developer will pay for improvements to the stormwater systems, a new fire hydrant, and will even make a parks contribution. I was going to ask for a fact check, but it sounds like that's been confirmed. This housing production would not have been possible here prior to the repeal of parking minimums. Thanks to the thoughtful removal of that arbitrary standard, the landowner may now determine what is the highest and best use of space on their land. This is great. I only have one note of feedback and one complaint. And this is not really for Planning Commission, but we've seen a number of small businesses, most recently the new Hazel Coffee Company in Packard Row, run into permitting delays because our building department repeatedly approved plans and then failed inspections of those as-built, or those built-as-designed spaces. We need to make development less arduous in this city while ensuring adherence to the Building Code for health and safety. Finally, my complaint is that these homes are once again being built up to the maximum of what's allowed by Right. This is happening all over the city, and it's clear it's because our zoning has not kept up with the demands for space in the city. This means we see less variety. Of course, every new apartment building looks roughly the same. We've regulated form and aesthetics so tightly that there's not room for flexibility based on market conditions or neighborhood context, whatever that is. A quick plug for Neighborhood Week, which you've already heard. If you love geeking out about this stuff, check out moreneighborsa2.org, and join us for events happening every day through Saturday this week. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy birthday.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you for your time to address you tonight. My name is Eric Shalaco, and I live in the Georgetown neighborhood of, in Ward Four. I'm speaking in support of the development at 2502 Packard and more housing and retail than George. I actually live right behind it, off of Page Avenue, so it's about as in my backyard as it gets. And I say yes to it being built there, and also all over my town, all over town. While I understood the George's owner's decision to convert the previous retail space to housing, I do admit there was a part of me that thought there was a missed opportunity there for my community. I know that me and my neighbors want to have grocery stores and restaurants and other amenities within walking distance, so our neighborhood will be an even better place to live. So when I heard that the George wants to turn space for cars into space for people, and even hearing tonight that the removal of parking minimums aided that decision, I got excited for it. It's not my birthday, but I'm still pretty excited. Ann Arbor's housing crisis can only be solved by adding more homes, and the people living there need to not rely on driving to meet their needs. That stretch of Packard is densely populated with transit access, and new and existing businesses would love more customers. And if we can make that happen in my neck of the woods, let's make it happen all over Ann Arbor. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Chow. I'm in Ward Four, also in the Georgetown neighborhood. The first public meeting I ever attended was the conversion of this site back to residential from retail, and I got flyer'd in the mail because I lived near it. And I was like, I am so mad about this that I'm going to listen to an actual city meeting. And I was ready to talk during that meeting until I heard the reasons for why the retail didn't work there, it being set back and below grade, and people not being interested. Because before I heard that, I thought it was just the rent's too high, and they should just lower the rent and people will come. But it's a lot more complicated than that. Since then, I am back. I'm very pleased to see that retail is being put back. Part of why I was so excited back then was because I so desperately wanted a place to walk to, that I could meander and watch people and all that other stuff. And that area in this neighborhood, and I still live in this neighborhood, not as close to the George, doesn't have a whole lot of business, especially the more south you go, the less stuff to see that there is. So I'm very excited to see a plan for using that space. Anecdotally, when I walk through the courtyard, it's pretty, but there aren't a lot of people there. Sometimes I see people relieve their dogs there, like the extent of which I see stuff happening there. I think most people, a lot of people, if they're looking for green space, Esch Park is right behind the George and is very well-used. So I'm just very happy to see a plan for retail happening in my neighborhood where I can walk to, and that it is closer to Packard facing, and I really hope it works out. So thanks for having the plan and hoping for approval.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eric Goldberg. I live at 3010 Dexter Road in the fifth ward, and I would also like to speak in support of the proposal for 2502 Packard Street, the George. I think it's great to replace unused parking spaces with housing. We need housing desperately. I think that this is, it aligns with our values of sustainability, equity, affordability, and accessibility. So it speaks to all points of Vision Zero and the electoral results going back several cycles. My, I hope that this gets approved, and I spoke about this at council last night, but I wanted to raise it again here. My wife and I moved here from California in 2021, and part of, one of the many reasons we moved was because of the effects of climate change on our lifestyle in the Bay Area. We were inhaling a lot of wildfire smoke, and it was not a very pleasant thing. Now we're seeing the same thing happen here in Ann Arbor. We're exposed to wildfire smoke from Canadian wildfires thousands of miles away every year, and this is only going to get worse for the foreseeable future. So although we are experiencing this, Ann Arbor will be a climate refuge destination, and it already is, as it has been for me and my wife already. So anything we can do to add more housing and to densify our city so that we can help lower the carbon footprint of Ann Arbor, as well as all people on the planet, will be helpful for turning around, slowing, and hopefully someday turning around climate change. So yeah, in summary, I don't think we need more parking. We need more housing, and improving the George would be a win for housing in our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Manager Kelly, do we have any remote, we do not have any remote participants. So I will close the public hearing and read the motion again, or actually, I'll read it for the first time. The Ann Arbor Planning Commission hereby approves SP 24-0019 2502 Packard Street Site Plan, Version 5, dated August 15, 2024, and recommends the City Council approve a development agreement for a parkland contribution. Moved by Commissioner Weatherby and Councilmember Dish. We are now in discussion. Who'd like to kick us off? Commissioner Hammersmith.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this petition to us. We always appreciate new housing. I like how you've reoriented the circulation of the site as well, while still maintaining some of the green space. It's great, too, that the new building is more on grade. I just have a few questions. Can you remind me, is the current building all electric?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I have two gas grills in the back, but all of the appliances are gas, I'm sorry, are electric.
So there's no gas line except for the grills?
No, correct.
Why no solar?
There are some condensers on the roof that are kind of in the way. We've considered it for the new one. I've actually approached a couple different solar companies, and they've pointed out some issues with the roof and the layout, but we can look into it. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, we can't, we can't require it. I would encourage you to keep looking into it. It's free energy.
Yes.
Just one more thing, and I'm very in support of this, but parks contribution, I'm curious why it's going to Bicentennial Park? Was that at the request of the Parks Department?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you.
Ms. DeLeo, do you know?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I noticed when I was, you know, on the map, there's two, and one of the speakers mentioned Esch Park, so I wasn't sure if like, you know, we'd want to, if there were necessary improvements to make to those since they're closer and walkable to the site, but I will let parks do their thing. I was just curious.
Typically, the language for a development agreement talks about, can be used for, it names local parks such as, and regional parks such as. My understanding is that the parks has a more immediate need and a funding gap for the splash pad at the Bicentennial Park, which is in the south side of town, and this project is also the south side of town. It doesn't have to be used for there, but that had a more immediate need and ready plant, shovel-ready plans compared to Esch Park, but upon request, it can be reallocated.
I'm not planning on requesting. I was just, I was mostly curious. That is fine with me. They can leave it. Splash pads are great. Thank you very much for bringing this.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherby.
Just wanted to echo the, thank you for bringing this up. And this building and this area is, to me, a good example of just, I think people think of buildings as permanent, and I think this is a really good example of, if it doesn't work out, let's try something different. We can change buildings. We can change what's in them. We can change kind of the bits on the outside, and I think that's really, it's a really helpful thing. We may be here in 20 years where we're putting buildings on the other parking spots and getting rid of those parking spots, or we're adding, or we're doing, but it's nice to see housing when we need housing, and I think it's a good example of finding, finding spaces that we need in an existing area or in existing development, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And it's probably good for you, too.
It's good for, it's good for everybody. Everybody wants.
Commissioner Norton.
I think this is a great improvement over what's there. I agree that adding more housing is a great improvement over the existing parking, but I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. The parking that you're losing is not a problem because of the current demand of your residents for the parking you have. You're not expecting any difficulty
Not at all.
To satisfy their demands.
Not at all. Like I said, I have 457 parking spaces in the lot currently. My current use is around 1.2 per unit, and if you apply that to the units that we'll end up with, we're...
That's what you come out as. Yep, okay.
It's almost like it was designed for...
Yeah, it's just been waiting to happen. Yeah. I have a question, just out of curiosity. Do you have a sense of what that retail, what might go into your retail space?
I'd love to put a convenience store, a coffee shop, or anything like that, you know. I hear, you know, it's going to be driven by the community and what they need. Ideally, like a convenience store would be great to me, just because I think that's kind of what everyone in my building is looking for as well. But, you know, the market's the market, and I'm sure it's going to, I'm sure it will be some sort of service of that nature.
Is there space out in the front for the one commenter said, wouldn't it be great to go to a coffee shop, and wouldn't it be nice to be able to sit and watch people? I'm wondering if there's space on the Packard side, if a coffee shop goes in there, people could actually dine outside.
Well, no, you'd have to walk up to the sidewalk in order to do that, because the building's still step-through grade, but because we built the lofts, it'll be double height, so you can see it, but you're not going to be able to really go out there. I mean, I could have, I could have seating on the sidewalk on the inside, but I don't really think that would be something...
So attractive, yeah.
But I mean, there's plenty of ability to walk around in the new, in the new, I guess, garden that we're building.
Yep, that's fine. I was just curious.
Believe me, I'd love for it to be up on Packard, but...
Yeah, okay. Well, yes, I think this is a great improvement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Good strategic infill. I'm in support. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Manager Kelly, can we do a, we need to do a roll call vote, or can we do a voice vote? What can we do here?
I would prefer to do a roll call.
Well, then, we will do what you prefer.
Thank you. Waish.
Yes.
Hammersmith.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Dish.
Yes.
Weatherby.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
That carries.
Good luck. Thank you for bringing it. All right, that takes us to 10B, UDC text amendment for marijuana school buffer. We have before us a proposed Unified Development Code Amendment of Chapter 55 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor to Section 5.16.3.1F Marijuana Facilities Commercial Use Specific Standards to Remove School Separation Requirements Require Submission of Near School Locations With Any Related Special Exception Use Permit Application and Other Modifications. We will start with a staff presentation from Manager Leonard.
Wow, this is what it's like on the other side of the room. That's weird. Thank you, Chair Waish. At risk of boring you with the staff report that I'm sure that you have all already read in detail, I will highlight a couple of components of that for the benefit of everybody listening. In August of this year... In August of this year, the Ann Arbor City Council passed a resolution asking the Planning Commission to consider four questions. Whether or not the 1,000-foot separation requirement from marijuana businesses in K through 12 schools should be reduced citywide or in certain districts. I'll get to why that was kind of the prime question. Whether a special exception use permit is appropriate designation for marijuana facilities, whether other provisions regarding marijuana growers, processors, or other businesses should be amended, and whether there should be, continue to be a cap of 28 retailers in the city. We provide, as the state and its various legislative machinations has approved both medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana, the city has responded with making the regulatory changes to make sure those businesses are permitted in the city. Accordingly, we allow all the businesses that those state laws do provide, as summarized in page 2 of the staff report. Many of them were established as special exception uses. The long history of the evolution of this regulatory framework started in 2016 when the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act was created. This created provisioning centers amongst some other business types, and provisioning centers were essentially the first clearly state-enabled businesses where you could open a storefront, sell marijuana products as medical, as medical treatment. And that act created no, established no separations from those facilities from schools when that state law was enacted. Nonetheless, locally, we did. We established 1,000-foot separation requirements from a parcel in which a public or private school was located. Both this and the establishment of these uses as a special exception use was, I think in part crafting regulations because we were frankly uncertain about how this new industry was going to be realized in our community and what impact it might have. At the time, there were other states that had recently legalized marijuana sales of some, of some types, and we heard a lot of community experience where seemingly in some of those states, there were marijuana businesses on every corner or becoming so popular, or sort of concentrated amongst other business districts that there was some concerns about whether or not it would unduly have sort of a driving out impact of businesses here in the city. And so in addition to separation requirements from schools, we also established separation requirements from one another and also established many of these as special exception use permits. That, as the Planning Commission knows, is worthwhile because it does provide the Planning Commission with some discretion to consider the contextual aspect of how that proposed use is going to be situated at that site, how access to it is, how transportation might impact and be more or less accessible to that facility. So it provides the Planning Commission with an elevated opportunity to consider the context of that business in a particular location. In 2018, Michigan voters approved a proposal which had the effect of creating a new legislative framework, which is the taxation, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. I hope I got that right, Professor Norton. And that was essentially the, creating recreational use marijuana in the state of Michigan. At that time, because we don't like to do anything logical, we didn't carry forth provisioning centers, but we established a new business type called Michigan Retailers. Same premise, this was a storefront that was now allowing a business to open up, establish a storefront, and any individual 21-years-old could go in and purchase marijuana product for recreational use. That act does, at the state level, require a separation requirement of K, from, of 1,000 feet from K through 12 schools unless the community specifically reduces that requirement through ordinance. Over time, we had been relying on, we being, planning staff, had been relying on the application of our ordinance when, let me back up. In addition to the 1,000-foot requirement, there was also provision of that recreational marijuana act that cities could not pass a law that would prevent a provisioning center, that is, the medical seller, from also acting as a retail center. So we had this sort of conundrum at that point that we had to consider, and so our response to that was to basically amend our definition of provisioning center to be parallel with what a retailer was. If we can't prohibit a provisioning center from acting as a retailer, let's just define them both as literally the same use, and that's what we did. Through that evolution, we had several provisioning centers and later retailers that were established that were within 1,000 feet of a building use that had a kindergarten use specifically as part of a childcare center, it had a kindergarten classroom. That was issued permits by the city. It was also issued permits by the state. Recently, the state has now indicated that they will not grant permits for those facilities because of the presence and how the recreational act specifically defines K through 12 schools, which is essentially any site providing any K through 12 education, which is a little bit different than how we used to define schools. So now we have several facilities that are within 1,000 feet that have long been established, long been operating, and have not, according to our police department, have not had any problems, let alone any problems relative to any proximity or distance from schools. So based on that, what I've provided to you in the attached packet is a proposed UDC change that would strike the 1,000-foot requirement from marijuana use facilities and specifically indicate that we are hereby not establishing any minimum statute for the sake of that recreational state law requirement. That 1,000-foot square, 1,000-foot separation is being removed from not only provisioning centers, retailers, but also from microbusinesses and designated consumption facilities. As to the other questions, is special exception use still an appropriate use for these uses? I think it is arguable, arguable. I don't think that these uses have had, I think, the adverse impact on our community that some feared when they were first starting to be established circa 2018. Nonetheless, we have a pretty good framework of these, and specifically, if we are going to be eliminating any specific locational requirements as it relates to schools, keeping them as special exception uses, I still think gives the Planning Commission the opportunity to consider the contextual location of any future facilities. So at this time, I'm not proposing any change to the types of permit, to convert any of those from special exception to permitted uses. Should other modification for growers or processes be considered? Also proposing, proposing that we remove that same separation from marijuana growers. And one other, just minor change, it's not highlighted in the staff report, but it is in the text. One of the requirements is that these businesses provide a regular utility survey of how much water and power they are using to the city clerks. I'm proposing to change that to upon request by the city clerk. I honestly don't think it's been happening on a regular basis, but this would still provide the opportunity, if it's something we wanted, we could request of any of these businesses. Lastly, should there be a cap of 28 retailers in the city? This is really not a UDC. This is actually in our licensing ordinance, a different chapter, so technically, City Council can consider whatever that is without your opinion. Nonetheless, I am presenting that if the Planning Commission is interested in that and it's incorporated in the motion, the elimination of the 28-business cap. The rationale that I'm presenting for that is that that cap was established, again, for some of the aforementioned concerns that how widespread these might be in our community. As we sit today, we have issued 28 special exception uses for these retail slash provisioning businesses, but only about 21 of them are currently operating. One of the reasons that I think that that can happen is special exception use permits actually run with the land. So if a business is established and it's not a great fit for them, for whatever reason, you just had a project that was talking about some of the peculiarities about retail on one particular site, when the special exception use is locked to a parcel of land, it's really locking the ability of that business to have to stay there rather than being sort of more portable to easily move somewhere else. By eliminating the cap, we would open the opportunity for any existing business or new business to present to the Planning Commission of the city the opportunity, in this case, for a special exception use. Still would have to submit the locational requirements of 600 feet from similarly situated businesses, still be in the appropriate zoning districts, but that might provide some additional opportunity for businesses to find perhaps more functional, practical locations in the market, whereas now, once we've established 28 special exception use permits, allocated those, anybody new who comes to us, we have to say, no, we've already allocated our licenses, and even though they are closed, it's not as simple as them closing our doors and that special exception use expiring. So based on that, I am proposing that we eliminate that 28 retailer cap. I'm also proposing we eliminate that cap for microbusinesses and designated consumption facilities as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We will start with a public hearing before we get to questions from the commission to you. So we now have a dedicated public hearing for this matter. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on the proposed Unified Development Amendment to Section 5.16.3.F. We will first hear from those who are present here in the chambers, then remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone. Are there remote participants?
No one with their hand raised.
Okay. I'll do this field then. Press star nine if on phone or use the raise hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, dial 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name if on Zoom. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, whether present, in the chambers, or online, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone present in the chamber who would like to speak on this matter?
Hello again. Yeah, I want to speak on this marijuana zoning amendment. I think, I think it makes sense to not worry so much about these dispensary businesses. I don't know, I feel like in Michigan, especially if you drive up north, you see a lot of billboards for these types of businesses, and they do seem like they're kind of becoming very common, which can be maybe just a little bit annoying if you don't use them that often or at all. But I think when it comes to sort of like getting into the weeds, pardon the pun, of legislating location, number, cap, it starts to feel like a little bit micromanagement, a little bit SimCity, perhaps. It's just, it doesn't, it doesn't seem too productive, especially when I, to my knowledge, I don't think we have too many laws around distance from highways or, probably there are for factories, but places that sell liquor, tobacco, it seems, I don't, to my knowledge, I think there might be some distance requirements for those in Michigan, but they might actually even be less than 1,000 feet. Oh, I see somebody. Okay. So yeah, it just seems like maybe it's time to not worry about it so much, and if there's an oversaturation of these types of businesses in the city, then they won't be viable, and they'll just do what all other types of businesses do. They just will go out of business, and other businesses will take their place, and I think the market will kind of take care of it for, for us. So, so yeah, I think it's, it makes sense to maybe ease off on the control for these types of businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ross Smith at 1607 Charlton, also in support of removing all this stuff. We don't regulate these distances for things like parking garages that produce PM 2.5. That's actually dangerous to the people nearby. Similarly, for gas stations that produce volatile organics. We're not going to do stuff for things that are actually harming the people around them ambiently. We shouldn't do it for these very non-nuance businesses. Thank you.
Did our remote participant raise their hand?
A new remote participant has raised their hand. Alex Low, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Alex Low, 2532 Pittsfield Boulevard. I'm 50/50 commenting to make sure that Commissioner Wysh didn't feel like he wasted his time by giving the speech about how to comment. In support of this, as other speakers have pointed out, it's a little bit puritanical to place limitations on something like this, but not on, on say, gas stations or highways. So if we're, if we're going to have legislation, let's have good legislation, and I don't think that the current version of this is good legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further hands raised.
Thank you, Manager Kelly. So with that, I will close the public hearing. I will now read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and the city council approve the following amendment to Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, Section 5.16.3.F. Specific use requirements marijuana facilities be amended to remove school separation minimums and other modifications as attached. And the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission recommends removal of the 28 marijuana retail facility cap specified in Chapter 95 of the city, of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Hammerschmidt. We are in discussion, and it looks like Commissioner Norton will kick us off.
I have a bunch of questions for you, you might have guessed. First, I'll note that fueling station, I'm looking at the UDC. Fueling stations are not permitted everywhere, and they are permitted by special exception use in a number of districts. As our mobile, as our couple-related uses, automobile, truck, construction equipment repair, that kind of stuff, so it's not the case that we are not regulating other noxious uses throughout the city.
Drive-throughs is another example that are special exceptions in this district.
So having said that.
Daycare centers? Aren't daycare centers special exceptions, too?
Not anymore.
Oh, good.
So I'm not, let me start off by saying I don't particularly find marijuana to be something I like to smell. I'm not a partaker of it, but I understand that people are and that it's been permitted across the state, and we need to be consistent with that. It makes sense to me, if we've not had any problems especially, to remove the space constraints. It probably makes sense to retain them as special exception uses, too, if, in fact, there are reasons that we might worry about impacts they might have, but let me say here clearly, I am not the city's council, but I know that when you establish things as special exception uses and then you don't provide clear criteria for what you're going to require or standards, you can get yourself into trouble. So I'm just wondering if you've been confronting with the city council on what would go along with that special exception, continued special exception use designation in terms of criteria, especially since we're removing now some of the clear standards that would have applied?
Well, the same special exception use criteria would apply. We have criteria that applies to any special exception use regardless of it being a marijuana business, a drive-through, a gas station in certain, certain districts. So as I said, a lot of that is contextual, thinking about how that proposed use functions in the context of its environment, its particular environment. That's why it goes with the property rather than sort of with a business or a person. So those criteria will remain.
Those would stay in place.
Yeah, those would absolutely stay in place. And, and, but I think it's also a good point you, you mentioned, for example, when these businesses were established, this industry, first of all, is regulated like no industry that I've seen. It's regulated more so than the sale of alcohol. I suspect it's regulated more so than the sale of gasoline. It is robust. I remember something like the first businesses that were open had, were not only subject to our local business requirements, but like dozens, or a dozen or 20 state inspections by different agencies. It's seed-to-sale tracking. It is highly regulated. But the special exception use also at times provided us, this body, the opportunity to think about specific criteria that might apply to that situation. For example, I think of examples where some were very close to a residential area, and this body imposed hours of operation limits on that business based on its proximity. Initially, a lot of them, the special exception use criteria were frankly restating some of the state requirements about securing your inventory, limiting access. They started evolving to things frankly like opportunities for some incremental site compliance, maybe in an existing site that wasn't up to current standards. I can think of examples of getting rid of non-conforming signage, parking lot improvements, adding bike parking, and we've also used it as a mechanism, it's an additional mechanism frankly for our nuisance laws. So if you are somebody, for example, that finds the smell of marijuana objectionable, technically the sale. technically the sale of those facilities, you shouldn't be able to sense the sale at the property line. And so the special exception use gives us sort of an additional potential enforcement tool in our typical nuisance citations.
Yep, okay. So that makes sense. My other question, and I seem not thought about this before, but can the city on its own initiative go back and revisit places where we've issued granted special use permits and note that they're not being taken advantage of anymore and there's no reason to continue them and remove them? Is that, has we ever done that? Is it possible? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, so we do have specific language in our ordinance that says when a special exception use seizes its operation for a period of two years, the special exception use is lost.
Okay.
It is not always that cut and dry. Sometimes there are, my understanding, this is where I would start having to rely on our, the city's council, but my perception, for example, of a business closing and a time expiring might not be the shared vision for somebody whose business is closed and they've been working behind the scenes for a year of that time to reconcile an ownership issue or a state permitting issue or something like that. And so we do have provisions. I will say that we, of the facilities that are closed, I work closely with the clerk's office who issues our local business permits for these to track what that date is. We will attempt to use that as a tool when one expires and it's, there doesn't seem to be an opportunity for that business to reopen, to open that up maybe for another user. But it is, sometimes it can be not as, not as cut and dry as a date passing.
But again, that's something you are tracking and aware of.
Yep.
Because unleashing the cap means, in our worst-case hypothetical scenario, most of the city could ultimately be effectively zoned to allow marijuana facilities if they, if.
Inappropriate zoning districts still subject to a maximum, a minimum 600-foot separation of retailer to retailer. So there's still.
So you're thinking through all of that?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Norton. Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, so I guess this is lawyer time. This is just maybe a piece of feedback to chat with the city attorney about something that I noticed when I read the language. I think the proposal makes a lot of sense and it's well put together. When we say at the start of one of the clauses, no minimum separation is required from public or private schools providing any education in kindergarten through grade 12. You have to read, you have to know about that, that 2018 state law to understand what that's doing, that work that's doing in this section. And when I understood that context, I went, oh, well, that makes sense why we're saying that. We have to say that. My concern is that somebody could take the position that that's in fact a legislative direction not to consider. You cannot have, you can't consider that in granting, granting or denying the special exemption use, that that's a legislative command, that you can't set a minimum proximity sort of application by application as to an applicant by saying, we deny it because you're too close. Someone might turn around and say, well, your code says that you can't consider proximity that way. And I would just run that by the city attorney's office and maybe add a sentence somewhere that says, and proximity, in addition to having to be in the application, can be a basis to deny the special exemption use. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Other commissioners? Commissioner Wetherby.
Mr. Leonard, you did say something about the removing the water and electricity requirement. Is that kind of just?
Correct, yeah, something like that.
Commissioner Wetherby, can I ask you to speak into your mic? Sorry.
I'm not used to having somebody over on this side. Move this over. The, what sort of environmental conditions, is that just kind of in the other modifications as attached in the motion or?
Yeah, the ordinance for micro businesses and for growers requires, has an annual reporting requirement. A written report or documentation of the energy used, water used in sanitary sewer discharge from the marijuana business shall be submitted to the city clerk. And so that establishes that that happens on an annual basis. I don't want this ordinance to be, that language to be like, we have no standards by which to consider that, it's just more informational. So I don't want that to somehow come into play that if somebody didn't submit that in one year, that they're somehow not in compliance with our ordinance. So I'm just proposing to keep it as a reporting requirement, but it's upon request. So at any time that the city asks you for that information, you are obligated to provide that information. But if for some reason we never ask and you don't submit it, it's not like you are in violation of our law. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, is that, is that in our motion?
It's in the attached ordinance that you'd be considering, yes. Commissioner, I could just add one more thing that I forgot in my staff report.
Sure.
I am proposing to eliminate the minimum requirement, but as to the question that Commissioner Adams was just asking, I did add language that whenever a special exception use is being submitted, that the petitioner has to include the nearest two schools that they are aware of so that for the purpose that Commissioner Adams was referencing, we have that information. We're not saying that that is grounds for denial or approval of it, but it gives you specific context given, I just, it was frankly kind of a nod to the history of this language if this gets removed, that that was something we considered and we would still benefit from having that information to the extent that you want to consider it in your deliberation.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Dish?
I just want to make sure that I'm following all of this because the changes of the way things were designated and the ways that we've adapted to state law have been not necessarily as straightforward.
I did my best.
No, no, you are fine. I think the history is weird. So is, is it, is it right to say that currently, effectively, if we're at the cap, a person's license is actually tied to the parcel for which they've received a special exception use? If we're at the cap effectively?
Yes, and yeah, if you, if we have granted you a special exception use permit for 1, 2, 3 Main Street, and for some reason that business location doesn't work, you're not the owner, the rent skyrockets, it's just not a good location for some reason, you don't have the ability to port that special exception use to 375 Main. And because of those time factors in place, there is a clock. So it's, even if you close your business, it's not like instantaneous that you, that you would say, oh, we closed my business, so there's an extra permit now. Because there's an extinguishing timeframe of two years in the ordinance, we can't immediately just presume that that property no longer will ever have a special exception use permit.
So, yes, thank you. You're zeroing in on exactly the thing I'm trying to fully understand. So it's because it's a special exception use for a marijuana facility specifically?
Any special exception use, because it is contextually specific, it is for the property. So when that's granted, it is granting a marijuana business at that location. It is granting a gas station at that location. It's granting a drive-through at that location because you are considering that use, which is previously identified as being worthy of some additional scrutiny and criteria of the special exception use rather than just blindly approving it. And you are concluding it is okay at that location in the way it's being, and so that means it does not have portability.
If there were an existing license, if we weren't at the cap and I wanted to move?
You could apply.
I could apply. I would have closed my business for which I hold a license and there is a special exception use, which still has to close out for after two years or expire at two years, but I could move. So currently, because we're not at our cap.
We are at our cap.
We are at our cap. Oh, but you, okay, then this is something that I'm not, oh, some are closed. Some are closed, but we are not so.
They're in that time period by which I cannot, I cannot sit here and say that they will not reestablish at that location and they still legally have the right to do that.
Okay, so because the special exception use has the while to expire, the license, we can't say that the license, we have to count that?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, that is, thank you. Okay, now, my math is good, my understanding is solid.
Yeah, we have 28 licensed provisioning center retailers. My understanding is, I think 21 of them are currently open. I think the first one that would come off of like that two-year clock is sometime in 2026 if it is not reestablished at that location. We have one designated consumption facility established and we have one micro business established. So out of 28, 28, 28, we have 28, 1, 1.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? All right, we'll go to Commissioner Lee, then to Commissioner Hammersmith.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward. I'm looking at the four questions, whether the 1,000-foot separation should be reduced citywide from my standpoint. In so long as the SEU standards are still kind of applied, I think I'm okay with this concept of the elimination. And just Commissioner Norton, your point on the special exception use not being spurious or like not having standards that should be applied generally, I think there's protection so far. 5.295, I was looking at a few of the specific standards associated, so things like security plans, and then they do have things like intensity, character of traffic, parking conditions, standards of density, et cetera. Let me just actually pull up the correct language. All of that said, as I pull this up, I think I'm okay with the concept of the, it being a special exception use. The question on the cap of 28 retailers, I'm a little bit hesitant about like the elimination of the cap entirely rather than an expansion. Like the liquor license, for example, availability is generally calculated on per number of inhabitants, like population size, and so like per 1,500 people or things like that. So question might be like whether to consider it as a function of population size, as to say, hey, what if we tested at, for example, 3,000 people per license or something along those lines? That would result in about, assuming 124,000 people, around like 40, 41-ish licenses. So gives kind of a natural breathing room in terms of ratios. Just, one of the things that I kind of like concerned about is like, is every gas station in the city then going to apply for like a special exception use on every corner kind of thing, right? Just to have that kind of availability. And so I'm a little bit reticent or just a little bit hesitant on the complete elimination of the cap, but rather maybe we tether it to a ratio kind of like how the liquor license commission, for example, does it. The other thing that I want to just posit for consideration would be an evaluative kind of timeline, whether it's 24, 36 months. Not so formal of a mechanism to say like this sun sets and then we have to like, you know, review it, but I'd like to have some mechanism by which we have kind of like looked back 24 months. And this is actually probably more broadly, whether it's like ADUs or anything that we passed, to have some kind of formal mechanism by which we look at it two years later and say, okay, this, this is, this had the intended effect that we were thinking or it did not. But for this, again, I think in so long as it's a special exception use and the consideration of impact on the environment, emanation, performance standards, all that good stuff, I think that I'm okay with that concept. The cap, again, hesitant, should be consideration for tethering to population and then think about evaluative timeline by which we look at that. So that would be my considerations. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Hammersmith?
Thank you. Marijuana, so fun. I bet Commissioner Mills wishes she was here since she got all of this. Is there demand or a waiting list for new licenses?
We've had one special exception use permit for some address on South University that the specific address escapes me right now, that we had accepted shortly after we had approved the 28th one, but we have never had one of the initial 28 stop, stop business and the two years expire. What our experience has been is this industry is really going through a settling out where not only some businesses are closing, there has been seemingly ongoing mergers and acquisitions and rebrandings and the like. And so of the 28, we've never, we've never gotten to a point where one of those has officially opened up where we can go to that project. I don't even know if they're still interested, but we do have one formally in the queue that if one were to open up, that would be the first one we would say, okay, you get the first application.
Okay. I think I'm okay on removing the cap and sort of letting the market regulate itself. I did like what you just posited, and I was thinking that before you said it, but you said it much nicer, like we could revisit this and change the ordinance again if all of a sudden there's like a free-for-all on permits for these. Now I'm afraid, what, not a provisioning, a retail, retailer. Both, correct.
Although, that's a good point. Most of these have, my understanding is most have abandoned the provisioning center aspect of their business and most of them function just as retailers at this point of recreational use.
Okay, this is so confusing. So I was, I had written this down as a question and then this sort of came up during the public hearing. So there is not a requirement for liquor store distances from K through 12 that you are aware of? Okay.
Correct.
I am curious for these centers that we're finding now to be, I guess, sort of a non-compliance because there's the K. What are they, like what is the distance? Like how much less than 1,000 feet?
Yeah, I think the, I think there are three facilities that are within 1,000 feet. 450 South Main, which for those that might originally remember is the Rabbit Club when it first came through. Any, anybody remember?
No.
That's on South Main, south of Ashley Muse, has a mural on the building. That one, I believe, is about, yeah, building with great history.
And you shoot it now.
A bombing. Yeah, it's a bombing. That one, I think, is about 250 feet, rough, South Ashley, across from the Klein lot, I think is about 350 feet perhaps. And then the provisioning center on Research Park Drive near the two hotels down there, that one is about 750 feet from a WS, WISD school in the Research Park.
Okay, 250 and 350 is definitely, I thought they'd be more. So that's, and you said that the.
Lot line to lot line, like corner to corner. So that's, I can try to look it up if you'd like.
I mean, yeah, it's not like you're like, well, they're all 900 feet and so let's remove the, right? Okay. And like you said, the police department has indicated no, nothing, really, they're just out of compliance with this part of the, okay. I agree, I think with everyone that's said anything about keeping the SEU that I would, would, I mean, we have that control over so many other, several other things. And I like the suggestion that Commissioner Adams brought up, just to make sure that by saying this, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, so to speak, with a petitioner coming in and saying like, but you said, because I, 250 feet is not next door, you know? So I think, and then the schools would be, would they be noticed if there's something going up within, like is it 500 feet?
Special exception use would require notification with, for properties within 300 feet.
300 feet.
Of the use.
Okay, so like was the school that's in 250 feet noticed?
Uh, they, yeah.
Probably they would have been, right? Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, I have some questions. Thanks for bringing this. For anyone following along at home, it was interesting to me that marijuana is spelled two different ways. It's spelled with an H because of the 1937 state law that decided to spell it as an H and then it would require an act of the legislature to change the spelling. So it is used with a J in non-official purposes. So that was for your trivia tonight. Everyone, take a drink. All right, from there, I think the, my questions are more hypothetical and I wish I could have sent them to you offline to get your answers, but I'm going to run the risk of asking you them here at the table.
I'll run the risk of answering them.
I know. And so I remember when I, 500 to 1,000 feet of a church, they, 500 to 1,000 feet of a church, they must obtain the permission of the church in order to grant that license, which is something I discovered when we were asked to grant someone's license. And so I was like, oh, I could be a jerk here. I wasn't for the record. So what I'm wondering about is, this all makes sense with our current UDC and with our current zoning. It begins to make less sense to me if we only go to three districts because I wonder, and this is the hypothetical, where planning staff is thinking about the placement of these. Currently, they are restricted to C1, D1, D2, C2B, C3, TC1, and then for secure transport, C2B, C3, and then for the growing aspect, RE, research, OR, I don't know, I forget what OR is off the top of my, that's what I thought it was, another research, L, and then. OR is off the top of my, that's what I thought it was, another research, L, and then M1. So do you believe that these would all move into hub? Because with our mixed use across all of those potential district categories, a dispensary could open up in a place where it was previously not permitted because that zoning district has gone away. Are you tracking?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's going to be, you are going to have to make 100 decisions like that as you think about consolidating zoning districts, marijuana businesses included. So generally, I would think based on the framework, how this commission's been talking about it, the transition zone and the hub zones would open up. Those would be appropriate places for these type of businesses. And so as part of that, the things that you would want to think about is, does that change the separation requirement? Does it change your opinions on caps? Does it change that you would like to establish some new separation requirements? That is, yes, I, I think that is going to be an issue and that is going to be one of many that we're going to have to wrestle with as we try to collapse 34 zoning districts into 15.
I was off mic, Mr. Leonard. I did not say it on mic, so it's not in the record. Okay.
I mean, to be honest, my team would love one.
Really? From your lips to this commission ears. I don't think, Deputy Planner, Kelly agrees with you. All right, so we're just, we're just trying to lighten up the mood here at the table. Okay. Yeah, so I, I think everything that you, that you're presenting makes sense. I think the special exception use should be maintained. I think if you do want us to consider removing the cap, I think you should also strike 3A in the ordinance. It says, "No approval under this chapter shall be granted for any marijuana facility in excess of limits on permits for facilities in the city established by Chapter 96 of the City Code or other actions of the city." So I think that, that if we approve this amendment as you have presented it to us, I would recommend that there's a strike through here unless you feel like that's not necessary.
I mean, I think it's a good point. The only thing I would say is if there is no cap, that doesn't have any applicability and if in the future.
Okay, so then it would by its very nature to be, be struck. Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have a leftover.
I can bring that up with the attorney's office as well.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Commissioner Norton.
I'm contemplating Commissioner Lee's comments and whether he was asking for an amendment, some kind of population ratio cap.
Yeah, that's actually, thank you. Well, can I ask?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lee.
Can I get a clarification on the planning commission motion at the table right now? This would be the separate, or this would be the removal of the school separation minimums and other modifications, which include.
It's going to be everything that's in the ordinance that has a strike through and a new ordering. So it's the five pages that were attached to our packet. So we would be taking the whole entire packet.
Okay, got it. Understood. So yeah, I mean, my first two points I don't think are not that material because again, it's the elimination of the separation distance. The two questions, I suppose the other two are the evaluation framework, which could be pretty informal in nature. It's just some, again, food for thought about like as we make changes, could we put in something to review it within 12, 24, 36 months? And the other one being tethered to population. But I also just want to get a sense from people about the rationale of eliminating a cap versus tethering it to population, something that gives it a little bit more, I guess, I don't want to call it like logical analog to other ways of like regulating, like such as liquor, for example, but that it also creates, yeah. So I just wanted to get people's takes on that kind of.
Can we, can we do this like just to your question to decide whether you want to do a motion about it? So if we can stay tight to that. So we'll start with you, Commissioner Norton, and then we'll work down the table. Sorry, go ahead.
I don't think we need to have a population cap. It's already constrained by the districts that it can go into and recognizing that we'll need to revisit that if, if and when we collapse zoning codes, I don't, I think if we had a population cap now, we're going to have to struggle through what's the arbitrary number that we pick to tie it to the population and how would we decide that? And I'm pretty comfortable the industry settling itself out and we're not going to be inundated with overwhelming numbers of requests to provide new centers. And if we are, we all have the opportunity to come back and revisit. So the short answer is I would not be in favor of that amendment.
Commissioner Adams. You stepped out. We're doing a check on the, whether we should do a tie to population for a consideration of removing the 28 license cap.
No, I'm fine with the proposal as written.
Okay. We're going to go down the table and then come back to you. Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Also fine with the proposal as written. Are we also commenting on the first part about the?
No, we're just doing the cap of 28. Commissioner, Councilmember Dish.
Also fine, given the point that it's constrained by where it can be located and we're going to have to revisit that anyway.
Okay, and Commissioner Weatherby? I just want to hear from everyone. Okay, great.
All right, I'm not going to make a motion.
You're not going to make a motion, so then that answers your question?
It does. Do we need to, can I ask, do we need a motion for the notwithstanding the ability to constrain based on a special exception use, we're not setting that foremost standard distance? Does that require a motion to amend?
I don't think so.
I was just hoping that it would work to with the attorney's office, just to make sure.
Yeah, because it feels like an attorney sort of thing and they would sort of review it and they kick it back.
I'm comfortable with that if that's, okay, if there are any else.
Great. Commissioners, Weatherby or Dish? Okay. I think we're ready, oh, sorry. Commissioner Hammerschmidt, you wanted to ask a question about something else. Okay, great. I think we're ready to vote. Manager Kelly?
On the motion as presented, Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Weatherby.
Yes.
Dish.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Hammerschmidt.
Yes.
Wysh.
Yes.
That carries.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 11, Other Business. Manager Kelly, you have a calendar review for us because we're adding a regular meeting in place of a work session on October 16th, and we're starting that meeting at 5:30.
That is the proposal to add an additional meeting to your agenda, regular voting session in lieu of a working session. As you know, we are striving to be accommodating to petitioners in this case. The city is connected to this proposal by way of the Ann Arbor Housing Commission at the 350 South Fifth site. They had mentioned it would be very difficult for them to present at a meeting in November, I imagine, related to financing agreements and so forth. And so we would like to accommodate them if possible and that's what's on your, the purpose for your calendar change.
Can I ask a clarifying question, sorry, about the 5:30 start time?
Yes, we polled the, the commissioners and there were equal number, I think, of people who were available at earlier timeframes as at 7:00 PM and there was some back and forth.
I totally forgot that whole email thread, including my own participation in it. It all makes sense. Thank you so much. Here's the proposed motion. The City Planning Commission approved the proposed calendar changes as presented in tonight's packet. Moved by Commissioner Dish. Seconded by Commissioner Lee. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. This brings us to Agenda Item Number 12, Public Comment. This is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We'll hear first from those present, then remote participants. To speak remotely, press star nine if on phone or use the Zoom raise hand feature. For phone access, dial 8775, excuse me, 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 97766341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name if on Zoom. You'll hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. Is there anyone present in the chamber who wishes to address the commission?
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm Shannon Lau, 2870 Oakdale Drive. The George is doing something cool, replacing parking for housing, reprioritizing people and creating spaces for real life. But it's not about this one development, it's about all the opportunities that each part of the city deserves. I believe the wave of support for the George today that you've heard is a part of a larger need for the housing and mixed-use spaces. So I hope that as you discuss the comprehensive plan next meeting, you continue to create opportunities for everyone in this city. I ask that you support a plan that airs to the side of letting anyone, whether they're a well-funded developer or not, be able to add more housing or mixed uses to their property. Tonight was about the George, but our future, tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, and beyond, is about envisioning our city as a whole and who gets a chance to live here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Marcus Garbo, 2017 Fair Street. We've heard tonight that the project at the George couldn't have happened without the elimination of parking minimums. I've also heard from the lower-town business owners that they couldn't have opened and cultivated their incredible community space if it wasn't for that same elimination. That ordinance, that rule changed in 2022, but any shoopistas in the room know that the high cost of free parking has been studied and documented for decades. We are not leading the nation in delivering on our progressive values as a city because we are scared of loosening our death grip of control. And it is a death grip. While we debate academic terminology, people are forced into lower economic opportunity townships with high transportation costs. Our lovely liberal city enables economic segregation. Much of the comp plan discussion has been in conversation with the existing UDC, which represents a century of race and income exclusion by design. It represents an othering of students as second-class citizens. It's a 200-something-page-long document written to stop and block and slow down change in the name of protecting residents? As you work on zoning changes in the next year, I encourage you to rethink your current role as somebody said, sim city planners, trying to create a perfect framework for a perfect city. Instead, prioritize getting out of the way of people and organizations who are trying to solve the real problems humans are facing. An example, so many of our high-rises in the Southview area are effectively capped at 19 stories. Most people, myself included, wouldn't notice the visual difference between a 19-story building and a 25-story building, but that latter building could provide homes for dozens more human beings, neighbors who want to thrive in our community. What can you do to unblock a thriving community? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber?
Hi, thank you for being here. My name is Meg. I've enjoyed living in Ann Arbor for four years. I'm a nurse at Michigan Medicine. It's a second career for me and I am really urging you to add more housing in Ann Arbor. I talk to my coworkers all the time, people from techs to nurses to medical residents, who all say it's really hard to get housing here and the housing that is available is really expensive. I lived one year here in an apartment in Ann Arbor and I could hardly afford to live there on what I believe is a good salary here in Ann Arbor. So for the sustainability initiatives in Ann Arbor, people need to be able to live where they work. And people complain about parking at the hospital all the time, but what if they were able to live here and take the bus or walk or ride their bike like I do? So, and also to be engaged in your community and also be able to live here. You know, thousands of people are driving here to work, but they're not invested in Ann Arbor. So what if we had them all here? So I encourage more housing here and to keep that in mind moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber? Manager Kelly? Do we have any remote participants?
We do not.
Given there are no remote participants, I'm closing the public comment. That takes us to Agenda Item Number 13, Commission Proposed Business. Is there any? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Lee. Seconded by Commissioner Dish. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.